One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we won't be gathering for the Thanksgiving holiday, some a moment for hope and thanks for all the gifts that have been bestowed upon us in our beautiful town. Thank you. All right. Today is November 18th at 5:30. This is the Town of Bath. Madam Recorder?
Well, Greg Sheen.
Present.
Susan Webster's here. Elizabeth Skinner here. Mary Lynn Hickey here. Reba Dawson here. Lynn Castle.
Here.
And Rick Webber.
Here. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Did everyone have the opportunity to look over the minutes from our meeting on the fourth? Do we have any revisions, additions, changes?
I didn't get any. I sent you everything. I mean, we can't find it, but...
I'm good. You want good?
We have no persons appearing before council today. We do have a few communications, and I'm sure Beth will Beth and Reba will share more on the Veterans Day and General Barstow, which was a great turnout and just it was just really well done and the and the amount of volunteers we had out there serving was just really impressive, and I'll let I'll let Beth expand on that. Ewing Street Bridge, you know, the the sign keeps getting removed on the Ewing Street Bridge. This is a safety issue. Please, if you're touching the sign, please do not. We do have someone that watches the bridge pretty much 24 hours a day and sends us a text every time the sign is moved, which is fairly regularly. So we do need that sign sign to stay in place until we can make a decision and begin to address a pretty serious issue we have down there. So it is it is a non-safe.
Are they moving the sign and crossing the bridge?
Yes.
In a car?
Yeah. That's what's happening.
Okay, well.
Also, I want just a minute just to speak on our Christmas market, which is coming up December 12 through the 14th. This is why I took through our On Track program. We had a generous gift from the Tom and Virginia Sealy Foundation, which will allow us to offer free skating for all children under the age of 12. In addition to Sealy, the Morton County Commission generously donated to to the Rink project as well as Valley Health, Roy Service Station, and several other businesses, James Novak Real Estate locally also. So thank you to all those folks. Moving down to our committee and board reports.
Wait a minute, Greg. Can you go back to Ewing Street Bridge?
Yes.
Is DOH involved with the repair of that or anything?
No, not at all. This is the town. This is a town responsibility. You know, Mary and and Reba and the Grants Committee will begin trying to find a solution. I mean, there are several solutions we really need to to discuss. We're just not there yet. We're not there. And what you know, what is the absolute necessity of that bridge? There's some other points, but there's a lot of work still being done down there. There's how the equipment's still going up and down visor.
Yeah.
So until that all happens, you know, we can address this later in the spring, but we just want everyone to be safe at this point.
Is there a way to make that sign immovable? Chain it, lock it?
Yeah, I'd hate to run a chain anywhere where someone that doesn't realize that that sign is there and you start damaging someone's car and that type of thing. I like to avoid that. It doesn't get a lot of traffic, but it does get some traffic. I just want everyone to be mindful, just to leave the sign in place.
If somebody moves the sign and drives across, is there a chance that the bridge could collapse?
Well, that's why we close it.
Yeah, is it that close?
It's closed for a reason.
Yes, and they made us do it immediately.
You'll know who moves the sign when their car is sitting there.
Ignore your own peril.
Okay. That's a real very good point. We will know the culprit when that when that incident occurs. Beware, we know who you are when this happens. There's no way to explain your way out of that one, that's for sure. So that, yeah. And again, Sam and Public Works, it's great. They're they're very attentive to addressing that, but we don't want them to spend five trips a day putting that sign back up or several trips.
Right.
Does it blow up?
It's not blowing up. It's sandbagged down. Yeah, that it's intentionally being being moved.
You could set up a little security camera.
We have one. We have Rita and Tom Hall.
He means business. I'm not fussed with him.
Again, that's just just folks, just just be mindful of that issue. On Track, Mary, do you want to share anything from in regard to On Track?
Yeah, so we are Bree, who is our town representative heading up the On Track Initiative, and myself, met with Jennifer Brennan from Main Street, and we shared with her, this happened just this week, we shared the renderings that we received pro bono from the Mills Group for the refresh of downtown, and they will have a different lens, the Main Street folks. Their their focus is on on creating an environment that obviously is very business friendly and supportive of them. And so we walked through the design elements that we've got in the rendering so far, and their team, all of these services are provided pro bono, by the way, which is so great for us, but they're going to help me cost out some of the design elements. The most expensive one is the occasional permanent seating we'll be setting up between in the corridor between like the courthouse and going up to the train depot. Our sidewalks are pretty deep, and there are places where we could put some permanent seating, and then we've got more eateries and things. So we're going to work with them to get cost estimates, so I have that to apply for grants, and they also have grants. So I'm very excited about that. And once Main Street has sort of finalized what they're thinking about, and we have all of their input, I will share at a public meeting with easels and stuff, where we talk about what we're proposing, because this council has to review it, has to approve it, what we're looking at for downtown, and hopefully by the will be a little further along in terms of identifying potential funders, grantors for this work as well. That, and also, we are planning a an opening reception for Main Street. I believe we are now looking at Crust as the location for that, and just working on a date to make that happen. I think we were looking at like a Sunday, maybe after Christmas. I'm not sure when that was. But the opening reception and our work with On Track to finalize a vision for downtown before we bring it to council to review and approve and further discuss, those are the main activities going on right now.
Yeah, On Track, for everyone's information, On Track is critically important for us to get the Main Streets. Once we reach the Main Street level, or even a project like the Train Depot lot, there are grants available which will allow us to make additional improvements over which we already have funding for to the to the Train Depot as we try to connect the north end, ultimately connect the north end to to the south end in one continuous, kind of kind of beautiful, walking, walkable, completely walkable small town. So we're really, really excited about about that. As Mary Mary mentioned about about the seating and cafe-style seating, depending on the business, so there could be a combination of bench seating in front of some or facing some of the retail shops, there could be cafe-type seating in front of some of the other restaurants and that type of thing on the on the side where we have the expanded sidewalks. In addition to the great work the Tree Board is doing with our tree canopy, which is critically important, so combining all those things is just going to make our town truly reflect on the town and the gem that it is.
Well, I think to add to this, what we have to keep in mind is this with the Mills Group is a design. This is separate from fabulous facades.
That's right.
Which I'm thinking are gonna it's gonna kind of meld together.
They will meet in the middle.
Yeah, so all these facades may be able to.
They are. We've had a couple. We've had some applications coming in on the facades for some really good work on Fairfax that was a start. So, yeah, some Fairfax, also when Independence. So it's one business at a time.
Yeah.
Again, a lot of these projects probably won't start after the first three years, say, weather permitting, but people are very interested in getting this work done. And Susan's right, everything should just fit, and you're just going to see continuous improvement every day within the Town of Bath. Something is going to be going on, and that and that's from the curb to the sidewalk and the sidewalk to the front door of our businesses.
And the streets.
And the streets especially. And Rick will elaborate more on on that for our for additional paving projects. So all good work. Parks and Rec, we don't have anyone present today. I'm thinking he knew what was going on there. Larry with the Planning Commission, not present today. Rail Trail, Pete did reach out to us. We don't have anything new to report for Rail Trail or or Streetscape, although we can talk. Rick, do you want to talk a little bit about our townscape project that would fall under Streetscape on Independence? You want me to elaborate?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is the Independence Street is is very, very challenging down here. You know, where the Inspired Chaos, the new Crust Restaurant, there's a lot going on there, and that street really does need to be kind of re-engineered. It's not it's not safe. There will be all new sidewalks going in there, paving, the parking is going to change. It'll be all parallel parking. There'll be no parking that that you're currently seeing. Well, that will increase parking, I think, by one or two spots. Again, the sidewalk safety, there'll be some gardens put in there, put in there as well. We have what Pete's describing as a 30% engineering study right now, so we'll be looking to move to move that forward, but we'd really like what we're seeing. And there'll be some more streetscaping to do along along that street as well. So that'll be a great, a great project, and that's happening along with streetscapes for Congress as well. So you're going to see a lot of work happening up and down the street, on the side streets throughout town.
Great.
Next meeting, four streetscapes. I think that one was 1218. Did Pete?
Yes, they moved it.
Pete did move it. So we'll move over to Madam Recorder for Train Depot.
Well, Train Depot, we developed some water issues, and the Berkeley Springs Water Works is helping us out with them. You know, there are things with the utilities in that building, and some of the things, for example, the water hasn't been used for years until it was turned on a couple of years ago. So we're discovering some things. They they expect to be done by noon tomorrow. So that so that's great. When we took our ride, and Rick will probably talk more about this, about lighting, one of the things I mentioned as far as the depot is to have, we have the basis for streetscape lighting in front of the depot. What I'd like to see is, you know, of course, a lot of light down there, and you're probably talking about the need for light on the north end and like that, but streetscape lighting, but with two lights on each pole to really, you know, show off that roof light in the evening and like that. We just want, when people come in to the north end of town, visitors and like that, we want it bright and safe and attractive.
The cool part about going over to Hancock was just going down the Main Street, because they did this with the light replacements. It was like you were coming down 522 to the depot and you start there, nothing but a row of lights illuminating the entire town. So you can see the entire thing just driving through at night, and that's what we're hoping to do.
So anyway, so that's all for for depot.
Is the sewer issue all okay?
No, but there's not a lot of people in there wrecked now, so I expect that that may get much, maybe even swing tight.
Good. Okay. And we're working. We're aware of everything. We're working quickly to resolve any issues we have. We have a good tenant, and we're working very well with Travel Berkeley Springs, and it's important to maintain a good working relationship with all the folks. Priscilla, do you have anything for us for Landmark?
Yes, sir. So we met here yesterday, and we think it's probably most appropriate for you guys to know about is that we reached out to Terry Golden with the Morgan County Historical Society and asked him, what's the story on the plat maps with the posts? And he said they're ready to go. He has 18 ready to install and three to go on the buildings. He said he needed, he didn't have contact with two of the three property owners that need it mounted on their buildings, and so I wanted to refer those to you guys.
Okay.
And if you need to know what buildings they are, I can let you know. And then we would love to get those in the ground and just be helpful in that way. So Ryan Rabant said he would donate up to six bags of concrete mix to set the posts in. Terry said anyone who has trucks can come pick up, and they're already mounted on the post, and they're ready to put in the ground. And Ryan also can donate the use of one gas-powered auger as well to dig holes for the posts. We would need a couple of augers, some men with trucks, and we're happy to fill in volunteers with town employees. I don't know how you want to do that, but let us know.
Public Works install that. Public Works would be great, and maybe Craig Dean can Craig Craig Dean might be able to help out, too. He told me he would he could do some work on that.
Have them get in touch with Sam, who's our Public Works guy.
Okay, so because we're happy to help with it, we just don't want to run the whole operation.
Probably better if you have like the same people putting them in, because then they'll all be put in the same way.
And, yeah, and Terry wasn't sure if they're being concrete is being used or not.
I think that Craig Craig Dean did one down at the here on Independence Street, and he did, fortunately, he did put that in concrete, because it's going to come out when we redo the street. But it's in there pretty good right now. So I'm like, how much concrete did you use? But no, the the blacksmith did a great job on the on the pedestal, the pedestal signs, those the, you know, On Track paid for for the pedestal signage. So, yeah, let's if we can get Sam, and I can reach out to Craig, too, and then if we can get that auger.
Do you want me to have Sam give you a call?
Sure.
Give me a number, Priscilla. Okay, I'll call in tonight when I get there.
Great. We also voted on joining the West Virginia Preservation Alliance and also attending their conference, which is at KKK in the middle of May, and we're going to try to get all five of us to attend that. And I suggested that we do a presentation as well, since we're kind of the host city in a way. So so we're going to be working on that, and we have some ideas. But we're meeting again on December 1st here at 4 p.m.
Great. Now, thank you, Priscilla. That sounds fantastic. Madam Recorder?
Okay, we only had one, well, we don't have any building improvements that that have come to us, any of those notifications. We did only have one property use request, and that was for the Winterfest Parade, and that, I understand, starts at the depot lot and goes south to Roy's and RWR.
Back up around and breaks up. Lamb Green.
Yeah, it has been approved by the DOH, and my understanding is, it's like, okay, if we're good with it, they're good with it, and we've had it for several years. So we did approve that in in Finance Committee. So, yes, there will be a parade.
And yes, the the Christmas decorations look great through town, so they did they did a really nice job installing all those things, too, so.
I know. That's it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
Huge amount of work, and they got this much work and this many people.
Yeah.
The date for the parade is?
The 6th.
Saturday, the 6th, and Friday night is the Coca-Cola.
So the first two weeks in December, the town's going to be absolutely hopping.
Hopping, yeah.
There should be a lot of commerce and happy families and children in town, so we're excited about that. There isn't Christmas in the Town of Bath.
Yes, there is. We believe.
All right. Madam Recorder?
Okay, we do have some some bills, like make a motion that we pay the Town of Bath bills in the amount of $12,664.22.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor with a second to pay the Town of Bath bills in the amount of $12,664.22. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Close. Motion carries.
I make a motion that we pay the Berkeley Springs Water Works bills in the amount of $59,905.49.
Second. I have a motion on the floor with a second to pay the Berkeley Springs Water Bills in the amount of $59,905.49. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries.
Make a motion that we pay the Greenway Cemetery bills in the amount of $115.
Second. I have a motion on the floor with a second to pay the Greenway Cemetery bills in the amount of $115. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Close. Motion carries.
Make a motion that we pay the Tree Board bills in the amount of $4,043.84.
Second.
A motion on the floor with a second to pay the Tree Bill Tree Board bills in the amount of $4,043.84. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries.
Make a motion that we pay the Hotel Motel Distribution in the amount of $1025.
Second. I have a motion on the floor with a second to pay the Hotel Motel Distribution the amount of $1025. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Susan. Kate, Tree Board, what do you have for us?
Lots of good news. Since the last council meeting, the Tree Board has completed most of the tasks listed in the Community Tree Grant Proposal. That's the one that's in the neighborhood of $25,000. Truax Tree Service cut down or trimmed trees in town and at various places in Greenway Cemetery. And I felt really proud of how good the cemetery looked, what a good backdrop it was for that excellent, excellent program. I thought we just, as a Town of Bath, we shone, we showed. Sunny Meadows Garden Center and Blades and Spades coordinated the delivery and planting of trees on Washington Street, Wilk Street, and at the portion of Greenway Cemetery that abuts Johnson Mill. And the appearance of that part of the cemetery is now greatly improved, too. Mr. Truax has indicated he will trim the trees in the old German cemetery prior to the end of the year, which will complete the work outlined in that grant proposal, and we can submit for reimbursement in January. Much of the work outlined in the Demonstration City Grant has also been completed, including the removal of invasive trees on Upper Fairfax and planting trees to replace those that were removed. Mr. Truax removed a potentially hazardous tree on Green Street prior to the end of the calendar year. On the first Monday in December, Bartlett's tree experts will begin the process of studying the trees in the Old English, the Old German, the old section of Greenway and a five-acre plot of southwest end of the new part of Greenway. These are probably the biggest trees on town property. Bartlett's will determine how many of these trees are heritage trees, which is a mandate of the Tree Board Ordinance, and pro and propose how to prolong the lives of those trees.
Kate, let me stop for one second. Thanks for that. Now, after after that work is done, can we put a plaque or anything near or around, close to these trees indicating these are heritage trees? Just for people to enjoy?
I was thinking about that when I was in the cemetery the other day. I see that as another grant, but I would like to have some sort of indicator that these are heritage trees, and maybe a kiosk talking about why heritage trees are so important to the Town of Bath.
Can we also put a sign where the cherry tree is and just say, this is the cherry tree George Washington?
It's not cut down.
Going for a grant, that's that's historically accurate. It's not cut down.
It is not. Well, it has been cut down. Craig cut them down. They want old ones that were.
The one, the one.
No, 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 they're fine.
Okay. Except it's got a cable wire tied to it now. I don't know how that happened. If you walk down on Independence, it's off of the house, you know, the house that's right there next to the cherry tree, corner of.
Oh, you're talking about the big old cherry tree in the corner of across from Hunter's?
Yes, that cherry tree.
Oh, I'm thinking of the new cherry tree.
Oh, no, I'm thinking of the cherry tree that everybody walks by, and, yeah.
Well, that might be fun.
Yeah, that's because everybody walks by that.
There's also a cherry tree across from Gene's place here. He really wants to maintain that. He does not want to see that cut down.
Ballinger, Catty Corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We should, yeah, we should preserve all our George Washington, didn't cut down cherry trees.
Yeah, I feel like that's something that we should, unless there's some reason not to, that we should do that.
Yeah, we should.
And the cherries.
We have a sense of humor.
The cherries.
We could probably put those, maybe bundle those in our downtown refresh because of their position as part of, you know, background.
I know the cherries, I think the cherries on the corner of Independence and 522 are delicious.
They are delicious.
Sweet, and the cherries on Gene's tree are good pie cherries. So.
We should have all this.
Anyway, in terms of maintaining these trees, they're really important because large trees can do more work than young trees in terms of carbon storage and sequestration, air quality, improving, including pollution removal, hydrological effects, and human health impacts. And, of course, it's not good for human health for the town to be flooded, but in terms of respiratory issues, it's important to have the town's air as clean as possible, and trees do that.
Kate, how many trees did we actually plant this year?
We were going to plant, I think, 35, and we can't plant the Crape Myrtle trees until late spring, that they need to have warm soil. We also had ordered, and Sunny Meadows didn't, weren't able to supply us, we have two more silhouette black sweet gums on Wilk Street, and so those will come in the spring. And it's always better to plant in the fall, but we'll just have to make certain we water those. And I don't know if anybody's looked at that row of trees. They're just gorgeous. They're tall. They must be, what, 20 feet, 15, 20 feet tall?
I would say they're beautiful trees.
And the foliage is great, so it really.
It will be stunning with those trees.
With all the purple plums and other purple-leaf trees, it just, it creates a whole landscape.
It does. I think I think each each street should should have its own personalities in relation to the trees that are on those streets, and that certainly Wilk Street's going to have them.
Yeah, as much as possible. I mean, we we were unable to plant some of the trees we wanted because Division of Forestry, the state people, said we couldn't plant black gums in front of the library, even though they let us plant black gums two years ago. So we had to put other types of trees in, and that's the difference between working with the state and working with the federal government.
No, it's good work. It's really, you guys are just moving mountains, so thank you for that.
Welcome.
Madam Recorder? Reba, Grants?
Grants, well, we didn't get the million-dollar capito, capito.
Economically directed spending. We applied for a million.
Evidently, there was more need in other parts of the state than what we had here. Kind of a bummer, but I'm sure you'll find something.
We'll figure it out.
You're going to figure it out. We're looking for a Ewing Street Bridge construction grant somewhere, and Kate just updated us on all the wonderful things that she's doing with grants with the Tree Board. Our next meeting is the 8th of December.
How about cemetery mapping?
And cemetery mapping, we'll be meeting when on Thursday for the cemetery. Or no, you changed it to.
We're actually meeting tomorrow.
Yes. Okay, and so I'll have to get with you on that, how I can help and look into that with the Seminify grants that they have online now that we're looking at. Other than that, the committee is researching grants for all town departments, and that's the same way. Anything you want to add to that?
You got it.
Thank you, Reba. Grants are a challenge right now. There's no doubt about that, but we just, we've got to keep shipping it to stone, and there's there's some grants out there for us. Public Safety, you know, it's been a great two weeks that now that we have Officer Patrol, Patrol Officer Stangle on board, he's doing a wonderful job. This town is amazingly safe. I can say that much between the Town of Bath, the Morton County Sheriff's Department, and the West Virginia State Police, all eyes are on that, and, you know, they're just doing just a fabulous job. Officer Stangle in particular, he's been very proactive, very, very active in just a short time that he's been performing his job alone right now, so we're just really pleased with what's going on. Again, I think that, you know, the department made such a good hire there, and that he, you know, he has all the attributes, hopefully, to become our our next chief. Got you have anything to add for on that, Public Safety? Cemetery?
Well, as has been mentioned, we had an event in Greenway Cemetery on November 11th. We dedicated an educational sign for General Simon Forster Barstow, who was the only Civil War general buried in Greenway Cemetery. It was freezing cold, but we had a very good turnout. We had around 50 people, and as Kate indicated, a lot of work had been done in the cemetery ahead of time. They. And as Kate indicated, a lot of work had been done in the cemetery ahead of time. Dave O'Connell and Terry Golden and Mike Webster mowed the cemetery for us before the event. So there was a lot of community activity to make the cemetery welcoming. The event itself went very well. There was a real interest in not only General Barstow, but we also developed a self-guided booklet for all of the Civil War soldiers buried in Greenway Cemetery. Their graves have been marked with their names and their ranks, and we plan to continue doing that project for other soldiers and for other wars, World War I, World War II, and so forth in the future. We were very encouraged to see that there is an interest by the public in our cemetery and that people have not forgotten it, and they want to learn more about who's buried there. And our next big project is to recruit individuals to help us classify the types of headstones in the cemetery that need to be reset, repaired, and to, we will be recruiting volunteers and seeking donations to actually start restoring those cemeteries because so many of those cemeteries represent historic families, not only in Town of Bath, but in Morton County. So we've got, we know from the experience we had with the Barstow event that there is an interest to restore Greenway Cemetery to better condition and to make the community better aware of the historical importance of Greenway Cemetery. And so we've got a lot of plans on the drawing board, and we will keep in touch. And I want to thank everybody that attended the event and for all the labor that went into making it the good event that it was.
Kudos to you, too. It was really well done. And to Reba for the video.
Yes, yes.
That was, I mean, if I hadn't been there and seen the whole thing, it wouldn't have been the same for me. But having been there, all the salient features of that whole presentation that you captured in your video, it was really well done.
Someday, that'll be on West Virginia PBS.
There you go. Is it on our website?
I haven't got the video loaded on the website, but if you are interested in the pamphlets with the self-guide that Beth talked about, there is a picture of one on the website, so you can scan the QR code. You can come into the town office here, we have a copy of it, which you're more than welcome to take a look at, and you can scan the code, and that's how you'll get your booklet.
And we are going to be putting Reba's video on Friends of Greenway Cemetery Facebook page, so that people can do it there.
It's important, it's important to see. Again, in a well-kept cemetery, it's just a reflection of a community that cares about its past.
Yeah.
And we always didn't have the resources to do the work we're doing now, but now we're committed, and you can see the difference already in a very short period of time. And people are enjoying, you know, the cemeteries, and it was just such a great event.
Well, the thing that's so encouraging about it, there were several different organizations from the Tree Board to the Morton County Stark and Geological Society, the library, lots of groups who stepped forward to help with the event and wanted to be part of it and made it work.
Well, the Town of Bath has made a big financial commitment to make sure that our cemeteries are well-kept and loved.
And will be advertised or part of the Civil War Trails advertising now, won't we?
Yes, the sign was actually made by the Civil War Historic Trail Organization that has 1,500 signs related to individuals and battle sites from the Civil War. Will be included on their map now. So their website is kept up to date, there is information there, and so, yes, please go to that website and look at it on the map, and that is another area that we hope to bring historic preservation into, to have them understand that these are the kind of things that not only support the historic nature of the town itself and the buildings that are here, but the history of the community itself through those who have lived here and died here. And so we can bring all these things together to get a real entire picture of our community and its past.
If you haven't been up to Greenway, you can see the same type of signs, please go to Greenway, but the same type of signs are in the Fairfax screen, those two about...
The Battle of Bath.
The Battle of Bath and Stonewall was here. And there's one at the Country Inn also. So there are three Civil War Trail signs here. This just adds to someone riding around reading these.
I'd say it's fantastic, and I think most folks have seen Ken Burns' Civil War documentary series. They take special mention in part of that. Shelby Foote did a lot of the narration in it, Shelby. It takes a special time for one figure, Wesley Culp. And Wesley Culp lived and worked here in the Town of Bath. He's a carriage repairman, and he marched off to war with his colleagues and comrades in the carriage factory, and he was killed on his uncle's farm at Gettysburg on Culp Hill. So that's even, and they had taken, again, they had talked about Wesley for several reasons. He was very small, he was probably about five foot tall, maybe, and he had a special rifle, because the rifles were much, were twice his size at that time. So it was kind of an interesting tie-in between, you know, the PBS show and the fact that Wesley's here. And when you go to our Civil War monuments, you'll see the name Wesley Culp, Killed in Action, on our monument. So maybe that's something else that could be part of our...
We have a Culp Road in Morton County. It's off of River Road, and it's along, I don't know if that's...
I'm sure it's Culp. C U L P.
Yeah.
That's the way it's spelled, so just an interesting sidebar. Public Works, what do you have, Rick?
Thursday, we're going to meet for Public Works, and we're going to determine the first 50 lights that we're going to repair. They're going to do a total of 100. And I think if Peter has organized this, I think he's going to be on Thursday, we'll be submitting to Potomac Edison the first 50 and the next 50 before Thanksgiving.
Streetlights.
See when they can do it. Yeah, streetlights. Okay. Garbage collection, there will be none on Thursday, so everything will be picked up Wednesday and Friday, so nobody's going to be missed. Today, the guys did their one block at a time. They did Independent Street East. December 9th, they'll do Independent Street West, and then I just listed the rest of them. So in the winter, if there's nice days, they can get to a couple of them. If not, we'll resume in the spring, and we'll do at least one or two a month, then start over. Once we get to the end, then we'll start again and make it the way they are now.
They also did Fairfax Street along the State Park and just shoveled it out. So all they saw it needed to be done. They did the whole stretch there, so that whole, and they did the, a lot of the leaves were piling up there on the side of the Antique Mall, and they took all that...
Did he use his new thing with the pack?
They used the new thing with the pack, yeah.
I have a question about the one block at a time. Did we use the glyphosate this time, or did we switch to the...
We're not spraying anything right now.
You're not spraying anything right now?
No, that's correct.
Oh, great.
We're cleaning the streets manually.
And once we get through the first go-through, we are using the insecticides. The next time through, once we hit those streets again next year, we're going to go to the Dawn vinegar and salt mixture.
It works. So you are going to use the glyphosate again?
We really haven't made a decision.
To finish up, to finish up the first go-through, that's what we said when we met in Public Works in July. Yes, we did.
Well, I would like to propose that we draft an ordinance to ban pesticides, herbicides, and rodenticides in Town of Bath. Bring that to the ordinance committee.
And make a formal.
Okay. Yes, I will do that.
That would come to Ryan.
All right.
Now, let me say this, though. We talked about that when we met in July, and Reba made her position very well known, but the other three of us there elected to go ahead and use the insecticides the first time through to get a handle on it. And as part of the meeting minutes, because I went back and looked when I got your email, we did not say we were never going to use it. We said we were going to use it the first time through, and the second go-through, we would go to something that was more environmentally friendly, and that's where we are. So the next step, if that's what you're requesting, would go to Ryan.
Okay. Well, I've been contacted by several of our constituents about the use of pesticides, and I think it's in the town's best interest to not use them at all anymore and to place a ban.
Again, we've had this conversation multiple times. We understand your position clearly, and, you know, we will address it as a group.
And part of this, Reba, is that when you become a member of town council, your personal biases kind of go out the window, and you work as a committee.
Right.
You were overruled the first time through. The second time, we were going to use more user-friendly things to do that, but if you're not happy with that, the next phase would be to go this way.
Again, we've had this conversation.
This is probably not the place to relitigate decisions that are made.
That's what I try to encourage you.
The damage that weeds and these type of things can do to concrete, asphalt, they cost them to the tens of thousands of dollars over the long term. You know, we're addressing it, we'll fix it, we'll move on. It's very simple.
But this is not the place to do that.
Okay.
Rick, you have anything else?
I'm good.
You're doing that. Again, and as far as...
The rest of the stuff we covered.
And street lighting, and Susan brought up a really delicate point on this for now at the, at the Trane Depot. So that annual savings that we realized that's projected right now, it's somewhere around $8,000, all those funds can be reinvested into lighting, light fixtures, so that will be just self-funding, which is critically important, right?
It's making it go down.
Which, to do what you want to do at the depot, it's very dark. $7,000 a year, or $8,000.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. That adds up, and we'll clear that out.
Do we need to put out a public service announcement or whatever that we have an ordinance in the town that you're supposed to use? What is it called? Zero Freeze on the new sidewalks and the other sidewalks throughout town instead of the salt?
I don't, did they, we did that years ago when we first had the new streetscape sidewalks and all that stuff done. Are we doing that every year?
There was, see, what is it? They're called, is it salt or ice melt?
Right, right. Back when there was...
Some eats at the concrete more than others.
Right.
And so we had just done a strip of streetscape sidewalks, and so that's when this issue came up.
Right.
So...
Is anybody not doing that?
I don't know.
I haven't heard.
They sell it anymore. What's the product?
Is that safe for the...
It's zero, zero, is it called? Zero Freeze?
Zero.
It's a, it's a non-salt-based...
Instead of using salt...
Yeah, non-salt-based product that melts ice and snow on sidewalks.
It's kind of like the counterpart of the brine solution, instead of using salt on the roads for the same reason.
It's just...
But I don't think, did anything go out last year as far as at this time of year? Is there any issues?
No. I've heard of no.
Yeah.
Again, you just have one of those winters where you have ice every week, and then by the time you, you know, most folks run over to Hunter's and it's all gone. And whatever's on the floor at Hunter's, it doesn't matter what it says on the bag, you know, you're buying and you're throwing it down for safety.
Yeah.
Ryan, ordinance?
Nothing to report on ordinance. Next meeting, Thursday, 3:30 PM.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mary, bring us up to speed on all things water.
You bet. Okay, so as one of the outcomes of having the professional engineering reports that we had commissioned for the water plant to know what the scope of work, what the cost would be for restoring and refreshing our existing facility, actually, one of the options in that report includes a brand-new build that's way beyond our capacity to assume. So we will move forward with the option to restore and rebuild the existing plant, and that comes in at a cost somewhere between six and seven million. And we also have another $500,000 that is near-term maintenance fixes that need to be made before a new refurbished plant is up and operating. So we've got a significant financial burden, and as Reba mentioned earlier, we do not receive any congressionally-directed spending from Senator Capro's office, but we will follow up with her, again, I think it's worth it, and with Senator Justice, and through our Congressman Riley Moore. So we will figure this out. It is going to be a slog, it's a lot of money, and the work needs to be done, that's really not negotiable. So the water plant will be refurbished. We are meeting tomorrow with the Morton County Commissioners to discuss some of the findings in the professional engineering report, which make pretty clear mathematically, qualitatively, that we likely will not have enough capacity to meet the entire need of the Plan 522 extension, and it was appropriate for us to communicate that sooner than later. They're bidding out the job in approximately one month. So we will meet with them tomorrow at their meeting and discuss this further. The other professional engineering report was done to evaluate the silica line and what the town's involvement might be. The line needs to be moved because it's right in the path of the 522 North Extension, and the request was made from Silica for the town to bear the cost and responsibility of moving the line. And we have communicated to Silica and some of the other stakeholders who were part of those conversations that we had neither of the available two-point something in cash to pay that expense, nor do we have borrowing capacity. And that's all in addition to the fact that private water lines are policy and processes. We will service right up to your meter. The rest of the line is the private line holder's financial responsibility to maintain, and we certainly don't want to make exceptions. This would be a conspicuous one because this is now a multinational corporation that owns it and likely can access the resources needed for the movement of the line. And so Greg sent a very thoughtful letter to detail the concerns that supported the position we took not to take responsibility for it, both from a policy and procedural perspective, which is, we don't do that. We don't do that for any private line owner. And it would be perilous to start making exceptions, and particularly one that would likely be the most expensive one, over $2 million to take care of that. So we declined, and I believe that issue is now reasonably settled, although the PSC was contacted and we talked to them for a little bit. And, yeah, there are just a lot of difficult decisions that we need to make as a community of 800 people and a tax base that reflects that. We have limited capacity to subsidize larger growth efforts vis-à-vis providing water utility service while also being mindful of our current customer base and the fact that they just got, what was it, 20% increase we did last year in the water rates?
19%.
If we had to extend our capacity, we already know 500,000 is pretty much the hard-stop number, and that's the number that we can pump and provide on a daily basis based on the professional engineering report that was done this year in 2025. Thrasher did do one back in 2022 prior to the start of all the conversations around the 522 extension. That one was comprehensive, but perhaps not as detailed and certainly not as current. We've now, since Thrasher did the report, we've now had the DMV office come online. We've had the whole Rutter's complex. There's Duncan in there and Rutter's, and a couple other businesses are in there. We've had some additional infill, new homes being built on empty lots here in town. So it's really important to be mindful of our primary responsibility to our current customers and to not overextend ourselves at the peril of any of them in terms of increased rates to support growth beyond what is probably a naturally occurring limit of service area. And so the responsible thing was to communicate that to our county commissioners and just make them aware now, before the bid goes out, that this is a significant limitation on our capacity to partner with them on a resource to be extended that far. And in fact, I did raise the possibility that as far as we are now, we're down to Rutter's, they're getting water from us. I'm not sure how much more we've got left while responsibly maintaining appropriate inventory for our current customers and just being good stewards of a resource that is owned by this town. So again, we'll continue this conversation tomorrow and likely beyond that, but these were a couple of significant issues that we had to thoughtfully consider and make decisions about. And I fully appreciate that our position likely was disappointing for some of the folks we had to communicate that to. folks we had to communicate that to. But again, we, we really must be making responsible choices about extremely finite resources. So, that's where we came down. Mayor Greg, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Well, everyone should understand that we are legally required to protect our current customers from an unjust disproportionate rate increase caused by an unfeasible expansion plan. Economic feasibility has to pass a test with the PSC. So, we cannot automatically assume that we can take on $7.5 million in debt, which would increase rates potentially by 50% or more. That alone makes something that passes the defense for economic feasibility.
That would be for everybody involved.
Correct. Right.
Including our current.
Right. The expectation that the residents of the Town of Bath and those folks that are currently being served in our service area, that they are responsible for subsidizing land development down 522 is unrealistic expectation financially. The county, the county would have the responsibility of searching and finding grant funding that would allow for that. That would, it's their primary responsibility before it's our primary responsibility. I do confirm that with the PCS in that regard, that, that this is a project that is outside of the town. There, there's all kinds of issues that can stem from this, which we're working on, on all the moving parts. We'll have a discussion with our colleagues on the Morton County Commission. And we'll, you know, we will, there's, there's multiple alternatives in addressing the need for water, from finding a new provider to the county expanding their PSD. So, there's, there's other things, options on the table. We're gonna take our time and we're just gonna weed through them. So, thank you for your hard work, Mary.
One other thing I forgot to mention, I did raise, because one of the things that the town did communicate to our colleagues on the county commission three years ago was, we communicated our own hesitation about being a party to this agreement. If sewer was gonna be in, we had to be in too. We're kind of a match set. That was the only option. But we did ask them to commit to finding a secondary water source. And that was three years ago this month. I did look through old minutes to discover some of the discussions around that when Chris Chapman was the chair of the Water Committee. And there is documentation from that and also from some county commission meetings regarding this commitment that was made verbally. There was nothing in writing. Three years later, I did ask for, because I told them I wanted to report out on that this evening, what is the status of your efforts to find a secondary water source? There's a 16-acre parcel down 522 at the corner of Coolfont Road that was identified in those minutes for exploratory digging. But none of that has happened. And my understanding is that the current status of finding a secondary water source is currently that there's a study being done on an artisanal well on the Silica campus. And those are, you know, positive developments. But it is three years later. And we really had hoped that there would be more significant movement to diversify our water portfolio here in the county, given all the development that so many are keen to see. So, that's a, that's a, that's a legitimate goal. Economic growth, development, all of that is fine. But you need the water. And we're very clear. And we made it clear three years ago, we had concerns. What's different now is we have a brand-new report that makes abundantly clear, there just isn't enough. Our hard stop pumping number every day is about 500,000 gallons. And that's now with a, with a, oh, my phone's blowing up. And that is with, and, and that is with our water utility and its current status of being creaky and old and things breaking all the time. So, again, we are really trying to be appropriate stewards of what we are in charge with. This is a town-owned utility. And we need to be very mindful that we don't overextend our capacity to be supportive of growth goals beyond our current service area. So, that's what we're doing.
That's good work. So, thank you. Thank you for really just drilling down on, on all those details. Because everything's just related between capacity, storage, our distribution system.
Right.
All of those things. So, we're, and we'll work our way.
We will. We'll figure it out.
Very good.
I have, I have somebody to comment.
You have a general comment? Well, if you'd like to make a general comment, you can do so now.
Okay. My general comment is, I would like to give a shout-out to Sam and Jeff Duval because Creekside, their lovely establishment over on Congress, Congress Street, for the past three Mondays, they have prepared grocery bags. The government shutdown was on. This community was already stressed economically with some of our families. And they recognized that need. And they stepped up and put together grocery bags that they have made available on the last three Monday afternoons for folks who are in need to come and pick one up. And so, they are a great example of being a great community partner and recognizing that we're all in this together and wanting to be part of the solution. So, my hats off to Sam and Jeff Duval for what they've done.
Erica, thank you for that, Mary. And there've been a lot of organizations in town, you know, religious organizations. It's part of work as well over at St. Vincent's and Paul. And so, everyone's really stepping up just to fill the gap that, that was needed. Brings to our time in the meeting. If anyone would like to speak, you have three minutes to do so. Anyone? No? Do I have any, any motion for a general?
We do. We're not gonna beg a marble.
No, we're not.
6:25.
No movement.
6:25.
That was excellent.
Yours.
Chair.
Chair.